Yeah, what's up, what's going on everybody? Back at it again for another episode of the PA Politic Care Revolution Podcast. And I am your host, your gracious and humble host, Super Dave. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We back for another episode, right? Today's episode should be a pretty good one, right? I'm going to show you why I believe that the mayor and the city attorney has committed some type of illegal act, right? I believe that they have broken the law. Could be misappropriation of funds, something around that, that type of deal, right? Something with, something, doing something funny with the money, right? And let's kind of go ahead on and jump into it. This is with the, the, um, the Woodward project, right? The so-called beautification of Woodward Boulevard, right? Why city council is using your tax dollars? Using your tax dollars to go ahead and not pay for the streets? As they, what they got the bonds of, uh, the financial bonds for, right? When they got that bond money, that's what they said they're gonna go ahead and use them for, right? To go ahead and deal with district streets. Now they doing a remix and gonna go ahead and use that for, um, for some, um, the, the beauti-, the so-called beautification project, right? And you're gonna see this city attorney deliberately lie in the face of council, right? Let's go ahead and get this in.
Just, no, okay, this, this one, I'm, resolution number twenty-three-five-three-nine. Resolution amending twenty-three dash one-four-nine, increasing the project allocation by seven thousand, I mean, seven million dollars.
Okay, you heard him. Now this is the proposed resolution of increasing the project by seven million dollars. Remember that? He reading the resolution right there is increasing seven million dollars.
For engineering, design, and construction of infrastructure improvements along Woodward Boulevard between South Highway eighty-seven or State Highway eighty-seven, which is Gulfway Drive and Lake Shore Drive. Establishing a revised budget amount of fourteen million, two hundred thousand dollars. Funding for this project is available in FY twenty, and that's the budget for twenty-twenty-two and for our fiscal yearly budget of twenty-twenty-three. Capital improvements budgets in the accounts where these monies are now being held is count number three-zero-seven, that's twenty-one, that's zero-five-three, that's eight-five-one-seven, that's zero-zero, that's one-zero, that's zero-zero-zero. May I get a motion for approval, Councilman Kenlaw?
Some more, man.
May I get a second, Councilman Frank?
Seven.
We've been moved in second and we would approve PR number twenty-three-five-three-nine as read. We ready for questions. Or Councilman Doucette?
Yes, uh, I have this thing. This, this money, the funding supposed to come from streets fund. Hey, I was on council when we, uh, approved the bond, fifty million bonds, ten million a year. And whenever you sell certificates of obligation, which is the bonds, you have to sell them and you use the money for the purpose for which is, is, uh, stated. Now, under the terms and condition of these, uh, certificate of obligation that we did, is written in the terms. Article three is as authorization, the general terms and provision regarding the certificate. It says, "The purpose for this, the construction of public works, more specifically, the construction, reconstruction of city streets, and other related improvements, including, but not limited, to drainage and sidewalks on such street projects, and any related item thereto." Now, it was written that way because when we requested the money, we requested this money to fix streets, street improvement. The reason we requested this fifty million, because we have so many streets in this area here in the city. Well, this Woodward Boulevard has started from a three million to seven million.
Now basically Mr. Doucette did, right? He basically read you the, the, the criteria for those bonds, right? Certificates of obligation, if I'm not, if I, if I remember what he said correctly, right? Those are the terms that you use to buy the bonds. So you have to use the bonds by those terms, right? The bond money, right?
Now we-
Oh, one more thing. I like how Mr., I love how Mr. Doucette reads out the rules. See, this is one of his best, this is one of his best and probably the best council meeting I've ever heard right here, right? Because he puts the law out, reads it, and he calls out the council on this, right? He specifically calls the council out on an illegal act.
Fourteen million, we got all these drawings. All these drawings are not street improvement, that's the Boulevard. But yet now we still have a lot of streets in the city that needs to be fixed. Uh, I've, I've talked to some individuals and they say, well, you know, we gotta start beautifying. You know, we could do two things at one time. Yes, and I truly believe that. But if we want to do that, then we should be able to fund the beautification and the landscaping and all this stuff. What we should be spending this fifty million on is streets, street improvements. If you got water or drainage problems or something underneath the street, yes, the money for that. If you got a sidewalk on this street that we fixing, yes. But gazebos, palm trees, benches, parking lot. Everybody I've talked to, and I'm, and I've, and I've been looking to this, and I'm not gonna stop till I get the right answer. But everybody that knows about this has basically said, those are not related to street improvement. So going from the three thousand dollars, that's to fix the Boulevard, it was estimated. You know, it, it could go more than that, but if we're gonna put more money, it should be fixing the Boulevard. I hear this gateway to downtown. Proctor is a mess. Got all the other streets in the city a mess. We need to fix streets before we can make anything pretty, because right now, we don't even have streets.
And another thing I wanna kind of interject on right here, right? This is how ass-back with the council is, right? They wanna try to do two things at once. But instead of doing two of the right things, right? Like I said, the foundation to build in a house, right? Instead of, or you wanna do two things, okay, I'm gonna do the right side of the foundation and the left side to try to get it, uh, to get it quicker, right? But instead of doing something that makes sense, right? Better getting the foundation taken care of. You got the, some of these fools that want to start on the foundation and start on the roof. Doesn't make any sense, right? This is why we have a clown council. You have incompetent, um, people that's derelict to the citizens, right? And actually violating law. This is how corrupt that we have. This is how the corrupt the council that we have. Let me go ahead on and go. But before I do, main thing on their, their ass backwards, butt backwards, right? Doing things all out of term. You wanna try to make a beautifying thing when you have the, a crumbling infrastructure, right? It's like putting lipstick on a pig, right? And the main thing they wanna do, they wanna act like they wanna do something. So to the average non, non citizen, well, the average citizen that's not knowledgeable about municipal government, right? They'll think that a sign that says, hey, welcome to the Port Arthur, gateway to Port Arthur, is a flex. They would think that is, is, is something that's a power move, right? But when it actually is, is not the, is, is not, is not there, right? So let's go on and continue.
But citizens, citizens are the ones that are screaming. Even with the money we have, we still not doing enough. They still complaining about streets. But we gonna take street money to do beautification? And for the people who said we need to do beautification, I don't have a problem with it. If we want to take money out and put it in the budget to do landscaping and area beautification, and if we won't take money out of the budget to do the gateway to downtown, I mean, put money in the budget to do gateway. Now, I don't mind doing that. But what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna vote no. So the money is for streets, that's what it should be. And I have one question, I'll be done, because I'm not gonna debate with it. City manager, I, when I read it, and tell me if I'm really correct, it said that the money is in the streets unallocated money?
That is correct.
Okay, now, somebody explain to me, what is unallocated money? Because, uh, I, I think I may need help with the finance director. But anyway, all our funds, we have money in a general fund. A general fund is money that we got to do all the things that we said we won't do for the year. So the money in the general fund is to pay for these expenditures. That money is accounted for. If it's not that money, then the next part of money we have is the fund balance, which is a reserve or a savings for the citizens to understand. So the money we have in that, that money is accounted. Now, if we talking about streets, if we allocate ten million dollars for streets, what we, the street program say is we putting X million in this district, X minute that district, this district, and that district. So if we don't spend that money for that year, it should be carried over, and that money still should remain within that district because it was approved to be spent to fix streets in that district. So if that money is being rolled over, where is it that somebody says money is unaccounted for?
Bam, there was a killer right there, right? That's how poorly our government is ran, right? By the city attorney, former, um, finance director, city manager, and, uh, four of these incompetent council members, right? We are so backwards. We're, we're doing things out of whack, so much so that we think it's normal. Because think about it, you have a multimillion dollar city, uh, budget, and your money is budgeted, man. In, in the city government, municipal government, you have to budget all of the money that you have in these departments, right? And the money that you don't have budget, you have to make sure it's accountable in these reserves. So understand, people, like he said, you, you, you should not have any unallocated funds. And, and especially with these street projects, right? If you remember, like about a year or so ago, every, every year they talk about all these streets. They have a whole list of streets that they claim they're gonna do. You, 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 you don't have money that's unallocated. You don't have no separate part of money, I'm hiding over here, or I wanna keep right here, that's not a part of the fund balance, right? You have everything that's supposed to be accounted for, and you have a regular balance for the stuff that you're not using or the reserve. Because look, you could be laundering money, you could be hiding money. It's a lot of improper things that you do when you don't have unallocated money. And that's why they actually saying it. They're pretty much telling you something crooked is going on because you're in the city that don't have, and you have unallocated money. And that's not the way how it goes. You don't have unallocated money, you can use it like a little money pot. I wanna go ahead and do something, which you wanna do. No, you, you can't do that, man. It's, it's like stealing. It's like, hey, well, I got some money over here. It ain't put in anything else, but we just got some unallocated money, man. You cannot do that. In normal city governments, in normal counties, you would get arrested for that. But Jefferson County, you, you know, is suspect. So let me just go ahead and continue.
Okay, Councilman Frank?
All right, um, I believe every councilman is going to ultimately vote their convictions on this issue and where they are from.
Excuse me, but the answer, I asked the question, all I want to answer first, Councilman Frank.
Yeah, okay, but, but I'm chairing the meeting, I'm gonna let him talk right now, and then we gonna get to your answer.
Point of order.
Councilman Frank.
Point of order, Mayor.
See, this is how stupid Boy T is in trying to chair the meeting, right? They're just doing some type of tactics. He wanna play the merry-go-round type of deal, right? Doucette asks a specific question. You got clown ass Boy T, right? Instead of letting him answer the question, he wanna go round-robin, ask everybody else the question before he get to that answer, right? That's stupid, that's the dumbest crap I've ever seen on council. And it's only been done by this clown mayor. We have a two-time losing mayor that beat kids when he was a doggone justice of the peace. Physically put his hands on kids, got kicked out, and this is how this clown tries to chair a meeting.
Your point of order, sir.
Point of order. My point of order is, you, you recognize me, and I said I have a question.
I know you have a question before.
I have a question to ask. So if I ask the question, the question should be answered. And then after my question is answered, then I will relinquish the floor and you can recognize somebody else.
Show me in this book what it says there, and while you're doing that.
Okay, wait a minute.
No, no, while you're doing that, kind of, put him out there.
See, that's how stupid Boy T is, right? That's how stupid he is. Normal conversation, right? You don't need a book to talk about normal conversation. Normal conversation, you ask the question, the question needs to be answered. See, you have this dog, Boy T, make simple municipal government conversation so freaking hard, right? This is not rocket science, right? This is some clown ass crap coming from Thurman psychopath Boy T, right? Thurman Bill psychopath Boy T. This, this is, this is so stupid. This is the childish goddamn stuff we have from a clown butt mayor. And the DA, Texas Rangers, play stupid when this is going on, right? This is the level of corruption you have in this city. Most of the politicians are in on it. Most of the law enforcement is in on it too. But you just have to keep beating the path and make them do something, right? You have enough people, they're not gonna keep going home with this people. So let's go ahead and get back in this before I start digressing into something else.
Answer him, answer him please.
Yes.
I, I wanna keep order, answer him, but just show me in the book right there, where it's supposed to do that. Come on.
Okay, I'll give you class after the meeting.
No, 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 don't give me no class. Find it, you know it, you know it, come on.
Answer the question, City.
Now that's how stupid he is, right? Common sense should tell you if a person asks the question, let them answer. But the city attorney probably told this dumb behind that, hey, you just, you can, you can try to, this, this sound like more of a city attorney type of deal, right? See, Boy T, he too stupid to do that. Tell the truth, Boy T may technically be right, but that doesn't make sense in the, in the common sense of conversation, right? Nobody is thinking of those stupid stuff like that. That's why you need to get rid of the city attorney sooner than later. And she might need to get a care package before she leaves.
Your manager.
Go ahead, City Manager.
In, in, in the budget, there are two sources of funding. One is the general fund, the other is a capital improvements program.
Okay, I'm getting it.
Under the capital improvement program, money is carried over from you.
You got Boy T still trying to tell him to find it up in there. That's, that's straight stupid, man. It's, this is some clown crap here, people.
To you, when projects are not being completed or exhausted. The same thing happens for monies that has been allocated, ten million dollars from two thousand eighteen for certificates of obligation and not bonds. They are certificates of obligation and bonds. Certificate of obligation is one item, bonds is another item, those are apples and oranges. Money carries over from one year to the other under the capital improvement program. When the capital improvement program started in two thousand eighteen, there has been a lull when we had COVID and for several other reasons because the program in itself did not take traction as it should. And so we had a carryover over several years. That is where the money is coming from.
Okay, once, once again, no, he didn't answer, well, I, I got, he didn't, that is not correct, because-
Hold on, hold on, point of order, point of order. Did I did not read that each council person, when we have a discussion? Now, I'm just, because see, you the one want me to handle the things correctly.
Right, I do.
Just a minute, just a minute. And it, and during a discussion, I'm supposed to let each person speak. That's why I knew you had a question, we were gonna give the questions. So I'm giving each council member his, his opportunity to speak. Now, that's my understanding and connotation of it.
But you had to interrupt? Okay, then, don't have to interrupt me then.
But we not following, right?
No, Mayor.
No, go ahead, go ahead, you good.
This is how stupid that we have, right? You have some clown DA's, they looking at this and playing stupid too, right? This is the level idi- idiocracy, I think that's the word, right? Listen, the Boy T got me going stupid, right? Listen, this clown got me saying crazy words, I'm starting to speak like him, right? So this is the, this is the level of incompetence that we have on council. A clown mayor, right? Uh, he thinks he's a strong mayor, wants to disrupt the whole goddamn meeting, right? This is sad, people.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
That's not Robert's water, though.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's Doucette's order, go ahead.
Well, you follow Doucette's order, means it be short.
I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
Don't go there with me.
I'm good.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, go right there.
Okay.
Now, I tried to tell Doucette, right, about this clown here. Because you can't try, you can't reason with a clown like Boy T. He's too stupid to understand right and what's wrong, right? He's too stupid. So you know, I told Doucette that you, you could be looking crazy just like Boy T, where you try to, you try to reason with. You can't reason with the fool, you know, so, hey, you know, it is what it is, let's continue.
City manager, you just said, Captain, I know about capital improvement program, you're right. Money is carried over. That means that if we put in five million dollars to fix a one through fifty streets, if we don't finish those one to fifty streets, yes, that money is carried over. But that money that's carried over is to pay for those one to fifty street. It's not unaccounted for, it is still accounted for. It's carried over, and it's to fix these streets that we did not fix. Now-
See, you can clearly see they hopping with the money, right? It's gonna be evident a little bit later, but the stuff the city manager is saying, you gotta understand, once we allocate money for doing streets, we have to continue to doing streets if we don't fix it, you know what I'm saying? It's leftover, yeah, it's leftover for that year, but we have to still use that money for them streets. And this is a bond.
If that money we got in that district, and you say we didn't use it all, it carries over. It carries over to the district. It doesn't carry over for you or nobody else to take it and do other things with because that's not what the money was approved for. The move, the money was approved to be spent in this district. And I just read what the certificate of obligations are. This certificate of obligation, the purpose of it is written in here. Now, I just read it so citizens can hear what they say the purpose of the money is. I'm not saying this, I read it verbatim from the authorization of the terms and conditions of the sale of those certificates of obligations.
Understand the terms and conditions. He's reading what you need to do for bond people. It's not like city, you just get all this money and you can do willy-nilly with it, right? And be unaccountable with it. It's processes, controls, administrative controls, things that's supposed to be in place to make sure that this money is spent right, right? So this is how corrupt this council is. They looking stupid, right? You got city attorney, city, uh, city manager, Frank, uh, Kenlaw, Boy T, they looking stupid. Because he reading him what is the law on here, right? He reading what the policy and procedures are for to use this bonds, right? And they're just gonna say outright F it, basically.
I'm not here, dog, with the, uh, with the council because like you say, we all got different opinions, and I respect that. But the fact of the matter is, all I'm saying is, what I've just read, and what I said is, as a person who was part of the council when we approved it, I know what we approved it for. We approved it to fix streets. And all this gateway, that is not fixed street, that's all I'm saying. So I'm not gonna debate you guys, just respect the right that I'm, what I'm saying is basically facts. It's not how I feel or what I think, and it ain't, it ain't Doucette, I get, it ain't Doucette way. Because I read, and I research, and I'd say what it is, don't say it may. I'll show you where it is in black and white. And I'll work with you, but don't take it personally if I'm reading and researching and you're not.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Councilman, Councilman Frank.
I wanna take exception with what Councilman Doucette just said, and that is, don't take exception because he is researching and we are not. I, I would ask, and the only thing that I'm going to take exception with, is that I would always want us as a council to handle situations and circumstances, um, in a professional way. And I want us to always consider the information that we are sharing with individuals publicly. Um, Mr. Doucette, um, you, the information that you placed on Facebook, social media, and that's the only thing that I wanna really, uh, talk about and address. Your statement was, rather than requesting more money for this project, this item should be investigated for misappropriation of funds.
Bam, that's it, that's what he put on, uh, the council, I mean, that's what he put on Facebook. That's what's going on. He actually called them out right there, right? It kinda slid by a few people, but he's actually put them on notice. Now I said, this is what I wish councilmember Doucette, Bay Lewis, Deneen Beckham would do all the time. Call them out on it, misappropriation of money, and go ahead and do like Doucette doing now, and give a clinic on how they violated. Now Doucette already gave them a class on how they violated the actual, um, certificates of obligations. It gets better.
I wanna take exception to that because, and I wanna take exception to that because we need to understand that words have power. And that when you say something, whether it is in your home, whether it is talking to your children, when you are giving information- when you are giving information to the public, you put that out there, you cannot take that back. And it casts this, it casts a dim light, a dark light, and it casts an aspersion upon our staff and upon our city. Um, section one oh two that you alluded to states this, that changes in budget for municipal purposes, this chapter does not prevent, we're talking about certificate of obligations or, uh, in this case, those bonds, does not prevent the governing body of the municipality from making changes in the budget for municipal purposes. This gateway to downtown, this project which we have been alluding to, whether you believe it, whether you believe in it or don't believe in it, whether you're going to vote for it or not vote for it, whether you think it should be done or not be done, ultimately is legal. Those, those, um, parameters in the code ultimately are written in such a way that gives, um, latitude is the word that I wanted. It gives latitude and they are written in very specific ways so that those funds can be utilized as long as they are authorized for the municipal good of the municipality. And so we disagree with that, but we've gotten a legal, we have gotten a legal, um, determination about that. Whether you believe, and that's where we fall.
Uh oh, we about to throw the city attorney under the bus. Uh oh, here she, here, it's about to get juicy now.
Fall into so many traps and issues. You wanna argue with the attorney when the attorney gives their legal opinion that they've gone to law school, that they have placed their credibility on, their.
Uh oh, now listen what Frank say. Frank say, listen to the attorney and watch what crazy ass clown boy T do.
License on, and they give us legal, uh, opinion. We wanna argue like we went to law school.
Listen, setting up the city attorney, right? Setting up.
You wanna argue like I can read too. Okay, I understand that. But why are we paying attorneys? Why are we ultimately doing that and putting the information that, and casting this aspersion like we are doing something that is illegal, which has a, which has a detrimental effect on us as a community and on us as a council? And so we've got to really take those things in consideration. I'm, you know, I believe that if we are asking motive ultimately to reimagine Port Arthur. I think reimagining Port Arthur begins with this council. I believe that reimagining what Port Arthur can be and what Port Arthur ought to be doing ought to begin with us. Because.
There you go, that church hype, that, that church Bible, right? Church Bible, hope Bible, uh, something with no substance in it. Hope, 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 you know, hope, 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 hope.
Where there is no vision, the people perish. We've got to have a vision for Port Arthur, not simply motive, not simply the LNGs. We've got to have a vision. And when this council ultimately came to the point.
The city attorney, she about to get on the mic. She was trying. Ah, she about to go crazy and that's good for that goddamn helper.
Place where we said we wanted to make and create this gateway to Port Arthur, it was casting forth a vision of how Port Arthur is going to look and what we want Port Arthur to look. And so at the particular time and at the, uh, particular point, I'm going to cast my vote. Thank you.
Mayor, may I please say something?
Go right, go right ahead, Mayor Porter.
Oh, Mayor Porter, okay.
Mayor Porter, okay.
We're ready.
Hey, uh, hey, this is what I believe, right? They didn't had talks behind the scene, right, before this. I know they did. So obviously the city attorney is like, hey, y'all, y'all Negroes going too far, yeah, too far now. Y'all ignorant Negroes is about to get my license messed up, right? So instead of letting the city attorney talk, he goes on to the airhead, to what they, you know, kinda call over there, airhead Tiffany Hamilton for her doggone comments.
Wait.
You can go ahead, okay.
She says she wanna wait. Basically, she doesn't have a goddamn clue, nothing to contribute to this, right? But she just wanna go ahead and say, hey, call for a vote. That's the only thing she wants to do.
You know, it's switching over on you, but I'll see you.
Okay.
Now.
It's okay. I was saying that it was that I can wait. I don't want to just continue repeating what's already been said.
Okay, so you, you concur, okay, uh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Oh, the councilman, uh, Ken Law.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, I, I was the one that actually, uh, we had conversations, uh, with other council, well, other council members about what we can do, uh, to better fu- beautify, uh, Port Arthur. We got a beautification, uh, uh, commission that we only have about five or eight thousand dollars in. You get the calls about what can we do to be, uh, beautify Port Arthur? Uh, I did mention to councilman DuSette that we can chew gum and walk at the same time. And that was something I stated to him this morning. I just, as a young man, uh, to come back home, to retire, and to get calls about the conditions of Port Arthur. Now, I, I too was on the council when we, we did something that's never been done in the history of Port Arthur to invest fifty million dollars, ten years, five year project on streets. I was the sitting councilman in District Three. And I was very vocal on how that monies was gonna be distributed. Not one time city manager chiming in at any time. In the last five years, we did not do without doing streets and have monies to continue. Just didn't have the workforce to actually keep up with, uh, uh, the number of streets that we needed to be done in Port Arthur.
See, they knew that before doing that, right? What they were supposed to do was hire people to go ahead and do the streets, right? You know if you can do fifty streets before the doggone, um, before the, before you get the bonds, right? Doesn't make any sense. See, Ken Law is a goddamn lying fool, right? If you know that your street department can do three million dollars of streets a year, why go ahead and get a bond for fifty million dollars of streets, right? Because them bonds, you have to pay interest on them bonds, right? It doesn't make any sense if I can only do three years, I mean, three million dollars worth of bonds, right? We gonna say that estimate of money. And I get fifty million dollars with ten million a year, doesn't make any sense. What they were supposed to do is not only with them, themselves doing, um, work, you're supposed to hire different contractors to come in and knock those streets out. It was supposed to be a large portion of the streets supposed to get worked on. That's what the initial plan was supposed to be, not let the, the current street crew do it. You don't have the man for, manpower. And getting a doggone grant where you have to pay interest on it, it's ludicrous. It's stupid to do it if you really thought that you, the workforce is gonna do it. Stupid. They make no sense. And if you understand a little bit about city government, you can call out their lies. Again, Ken Law is stating that they don't have the workforce. Yes, you know you didn't have the workforce before that, right? Before getting those fifty million, you think you would've talked to somebody, hey, city manager, how would you do that? You know, so what he's saying is a complete lie because they're supposed to hire other contractors to do the streets, not just them.
But we need to stop getting as leaders in this mindset that we can only do one thing at one time. That's why the condition of Port Arthur, it is the way.
Well, you just contradicted yourself, Thomas Ken Law. If, how you gonna do more than one thing at a time when you just said you don't have the workforce to do the streets that you claim that you're gonna do, right? Doesn't make any sense. They contradict themselves.
It is, to be honest with you. I spent twenty-five years in army. When we were given a task, we did multiple tasks. At one time, nobody ever said we were gonna stop doing streets. When I'm off this council, when everybody's off this dices, we're gonna continue having street problems, drainage problems, beautifications, all these other things, residential, business development. You're gonna always have those things. But just don't be blind, just don't be blind. Other cities are growing. Other cities around us are growing. And we're sitting here just, you know, talking about streets that we need to continue doing streets. We have never stopped doing streets. We just never invested a lot of money into doing streets. We just never had the, the amount of feedback to get these streets done from those people that are out there that's doing streets.
Now, you heard this fool say he never got the feedback from the people that's out here doing the streets, right? He never got the feedback. The citizen's giving you the feedback twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. People, this is the level of incompetence and lies that you have. You have councilmembers lying to you, thinking you're stupid, telling you they ain't getting no feedback. In other words, they saying they don't know. They don't know what streets out there. We, we don't know what's going on with the streets.
So it's unfortunate that, you know, sometimes we, we, you got people that have a listening ear, they get out there and they make statements and not give the whole entire story. Let's do and continue working on the development of Port Arthur, and that's what I'm here for. That's why I think that, that the masses elect me in this position at a lo- at large position. We can do more than one thing. And anytime other thing, you know, we get out of the spectrum or saying we're gonna do something else or we're gonna get out there and somebody come up with a bright new idea and say, hey, we gonna do it better? You got, you got people that are uneasy about change. I don't mind changing. I don't mind getting the information. I don't mind listening to our staff and our attorneys to figure out what we can do better in the city of Port Arthur. Just broaden our minds to say that we working on Port Arthur and beautifying this great city. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and you, you concurd, uh, councilman Lewis, your license?
Your honor. Yes, sir.
Okay.
On the agenda here, seven million dollars for engineering, design, and construction of infrastructure improvement along Woodward Boulevard, Highway eighty-seven, which is Gulf Way Drive, to Lake Shore Drive. That's what the seven million dollars is for. When I go into the details, I go into the details, seven million dollars from total unallocated fund. Street allocation for improvement to the Woodward Boulevard, streetscaping.
Now, now, just, just understand what he said. He, he read out the, the, um, agenda again. You're moving money from a so-called unallocated pot of money to the streets, remember? Boy T, when I said remember, boy T said it at the beginning, hey, they moving money. It's moving from the allocated money, seven million to streets to make a total of fourteen million. Mr. Lewis just said it. Just listen, just keep listening. It's about the moving of money from quote unquote unallocated to the streets.
Now, I talked with, with the city attorney and, and the staff. We called the bond auditors and they, and he said, this, these things does not qualify. You can't do it. It doesn't meet the, the bond covenant. He was there, the staff was there. He said, councilman, I'm trying to find a way to hold my nose and allow you to do it. But if you can tie it in, if you can tie it in with, with the, uh, infrastructure, it, you know, I'll hold my nose, okay? He said, but it doesn't qualify.
There you go, somebody else gave an example where, hey, you violating the rules, city. You, you moving bond money to, to do something else. There's a misappropriation of funds, people. They, 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 they giving to you. DuSette did it first. Mr. Lewis did it second. They telling you what the certificate of obligation, the bond money is saying specifically for them bonds, right? And Mr. Lewis stated, hey, he didn't call the people, right? And a couple other people was there, so, hey, that, that's, look, that's what's going on.
Who is who?
Oh, oh, no, 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 please. Don't, 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 let him speak.
It's about the bond counselor. She was there.
No, 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 we aren't gonna ask.
Hold on, down. Boy T is trying to play. He's trying to, he's trying to interrupt, right? You're gonna see why I think he didn't put him in the legal binder a little bit. Let me just kinda rewind that just a tad bit.
I'm trying to find a way to hold my nose and allow you to do it. But if you can tie it in, if you can tie it in with, with the, uh, infrastructure, it, you know, I'll hold my nose, okay? He said, but it doesn't qualify.
Who is who?
Oh, oh, no, 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 please.
Trying to hide.
Don't, don't, let him speak.
It's about the bond counselor.
See, this is also a violation of Open Meetings Act, right? You, you trying to get, you have a council members trying to get some clarification. You have this clown boy T trying to interrupt that stuff. Hey, no, you can't ask it. Doesn't make no damn sense, dog. Look, the people, the DA, the Rangers, and I need to get on FBI too, they need to go ahead and come investigate this stuff with the city people. I need y'all to call the DA, Texas Rangers, and FBI because they're doing some illegal things right here. This is a clear case of misappropriation of funds, but now it's gonna get clear later.
She was there.
No, 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 we aren't gonna ask questions.
Now, he pointed out she was there, city attorney. She was there. The only she on the council is the city attorney. Now, boy T, city, city attorney, I already know she's crap up a creek, right? And boy T wanna interfere, da, 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 like, like they don't know what's going on. They wanna play stupid with this, right? But Mr. Lewis, see, I didn't, see, Mr. Lewis be doing some, some slick stuff and sometimes it kinda even go over my head sometime, right? He done also implemented the city attorney in knowing about this, right? So, hey, let's keep on with it.
Well, I'm allowing you to, you're, 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 you're a moment for dialogue. Go ahead.
Wait, I'm, I'm.
Okay, get through. Okay, thank you on that. We, any more questions on this?
I have something I wanna say.
Now, he trying to hit the galvan and stuff like he done lost his damn mind.
Right there.
First of all, this, you can't appropriate money by resolution, so the purpose is.
Now, you heard it. You can't appropriate money by resolution, okay?
This resolution is just to decide, do you wanna do this project or not?
Now, the crazy city attorney just said that this resolution, if you wanna do the project or not, right? She said you can't appropriate the money by resolution. She just saying what this resolution is, right? That's what she's saying. It's just to decide if you wanna do the project or not.
Okay.
After you decide if you wanna do this project, then you have to do what's needed in a budget ordinance to.
Okay, in a budget order. She's saying what you need to do. She's saying you can't do this by a resolution. You need to do a budget ordinance, something with the budget. The city attorney said that.
To put the money where you need to put it. Third, then after you decide to put the money where you wanna put it, then you look at the project and award it. So you still, you still have prior ways to go.
Three other steps.
So, but.
Now, mayor trying to goddamn interrupt again. You seen what the city attorney told you what you need to do. You can't move money by this resolution. You have to do some type of budget ordinance or whatever, right? But the main thing she's saying, this resolution is illegal. This resolution is illegal. That's basically what she's saying. Go ahead, unwind it.
If there's some questions about the used bond money, we have a bond attorney. I think that's what councilmember Lewis that's been with us.
Okay, now the bond attorney, she done validated what Mr. Lewis was saying. The bond attorney, she was there. She heard the bond attorney said, hey, you can't do this.
Uh, wait, but can I finish, mayor, please?
He's trying to interrupt the city attorney, right? Because the city attorney is not gonna sign off on this. She can't, she don't wanna sign off on it. But you got these ignorant mayors, ignorant mayor boy T, you got Thomas, you got Frank. After they just said, listen to the city attorney, right? They not trying to listen. After they just said, "Listen to the city attorney," right? They not trying to listen to the city attorney, right? So she's trying to clear her name of it, right? Because these negroes doing some illegal crap.
Okay, so when we, want to point out for future reference and for current reference, whenever you get ready to, he's called a bond counsel, but these are certificates of obligation. They're, they're, they're cousins.
It's the same thing. I think I just read one you need to vote it on, but don't, that, that's, that's not the issue, man. That's not the doggone issue. They the same thing and they still require what you using the money for.
But we doing certificates of obligation, but we have a lot of notices we put in. Before we ever get there, we run this in the paper, then we come to council, we have to have two public hearings, I believe. So I would just say for future reference, when we write a bond or, or we request for starting the process of a certificate of obligation, when we put the description in, let's make sure that we're very clear at that time. Because what has, what may lend to some of the concerns that you have is that this language is very broad. Other related items...
Where you have the bond attorney, right? Didn't Frank say, "Listen to the attorney"? Well, he said, "Listen to the city attorney," right? I'm assuming if you would listen to the city attorney, you would listen to the bond attorney. Letting you know, hey, you can't do this.
Gee, a court could look at that so many different ways. So maybe in the future, don't put other related items. Say, I want a blue house, a greenhouse, a brick house, a two... Say exactly what you want, and I think that will get you there. But this resolution does not appropriate any money. What you're doing is you're saying...
Hold on, city attorney. You telling me this resolution does not appropriate any money? See, that's why you can't trust these clowns, right? Even when they talk, they lying even when they not talking to you.
Do I want to move forward with doing this? Then you have to move the money. Then you have to award the contract. So, so you still at the starting gate, and if you have...
See, they think with four votes, they can do anything. Just like, uh, count former, what council member Charlotte Moses said, "With four votes, we can do anything." Now, you heard the city attorney, now you heard first off, you heard Boy T read the resolution to move seven million dollars of unallocated money to the, uh, beautification project. You heard Lewis say, read the same thing about moving the money to the pro- to the, uh, seven millions to the beautification project. And he just told you what the bond attorney said. Hey, you can't do it. Pointed at city attorney, said she was there. City attorney acknowledged what Mr. Lewis was saying and said, "Hey, um, what he talking about is the bond attorney." Now she's saying that resolution that says to move money is not saying that it's the news money, right? They lie to you. All sides are out of their mouths.
Have questions or concerns, you can always bring your bond attorney back, because that's what they do.
And attorney, this is what I want to say. We had the bond attorney here almost a year ago. He told us we're not doing anything illegal because of the broad way that it was written when we...
Now, look, the city attorney, she rubbing her head and all this stuff right here. Oh, I didn't want this negro leave me up out of it. Now, now, Boy T, talking about a year ago, they talking, he, Lewis talking about something recent. So he's trying to put the city attorney in the somewhere she gonna go to jail or lose her license on.
Criminally passed it. This could be included. No one is up here doing anything that would criminally...
Who, now, Boy T, who in the hell are you to say who is not doing something criminally? One of the biggest crooks in Port Arthur, right? You trying to tell us that you not doing anything illegal?
Place them in a position of even having to be, uh, hauled off to a penitentiary because we've misallocated or misused taxpayers' money.
He telling you what he doing. That's how crazy this clown is, right? He's telling you how guilty he is right in your face.
That is not the case, and I don't know who, uh, the council person could be alluding to saying that they were gonna hold their breath or do something to their nostrils or something to their olfactory nerves to keep something away.
Now, what in the hell Boy T is talking about? Boy T is losing his goddamn mind, right?
From us, we are doing what is proper. So if there aren't any more questions on this, we're gonna, yeah, there are, go ahead.
I just wanted to, uh, check with the city attorney. I'm reading the resolution. It says, "A resolution, amend a resolution twenty-three one forty-nine, increasing the project allocation of seven million dollars for engineering and design." This is a request for funding though, Val.
See, they, they, she lying to the motherfucking council. She pretty much saying, "Council, forget what you reading. It ain't that. But that's what you're doing. You're allocating some money through this resolution."
I guess, I'm gonna yield to the finance director, but you can...
She, now she want to yield to the finance, but you the goddamn legal person. How you want to keep yielding to everybody else?
Only move, move the money by ordinance.
Well, well, okay.
This is saying, "I want to do this project," and then finance director comes...
She's still trying to say that I want to do the project, but the resolution clearly says, "Move the money."
Get me if I'm wrong, but then you, you actually appropriate by ordinance. So like, you decide you want to do something, this is where you decide if you can do, then you gotta come back and actually appropriate the money by ordinance.
Exactly, and that's part of what Councilman Frank alluded to when he read a statement that I put on page. When you look at chapter two, section thirty-one, uh, E, well, section E thirty-one, twenty-one something? I, I don't know exactly, but that section states that you do not place a item on the agenda that it has not been budgeted unless you also gonna have an ordinance to amend the budget for the funding.
That's what they're talking about. You have to have an ordinance. You have to have an, an ordinance amending the budget for the finances. So they, they, instead of doing that, they using the resolution to go ahead and, and, and amend the budget to move the money.
At that meeting, and there's no ordinance on this agenda for this, to offer this budget, to put seven more million dollars into this budget because the city managers giving me the background and telling me that the seven million
Is unallocated.
But we, I know about capital improvement. Just because the money, unless we have allocated this particular money when we did a budget, you don't spend it.
Bam. Point goddamn blank. That's it right there. Let's hear what the city attorney gotta say.
But you can always amend the budget. But then Councilman Frank, when I mentioned chapter one or two, I was speaking about the law and our ordinance saying that we can only amend this budget once we approve it for emergencies or dealing with public health and safety.
Now, the problem is they're going to get, they have an ordinance for this. They have their own ordinance. So council wants, so if the dumbest on council want to go against to violate their own ordinance, let me see if I got it right. They want to violate the certificate of obligations. That's one, the bond. They want to violate their own ordinance, right, to amend the budget. And three, they want to violate the ordinance. They want to violate the, the ordinance. You have to have a, a, a financial ordinance to amend the budget. For, they want to violate it for amending the budget twice, right? Once for not, first you have to amend it to put this money there, right? Second, you only can do it in emergencies. So they goddamn, I'm just counting, right? I'm not an attorney. I'm counting like three things they violating, and it's on their goddamn ordinance.
See, I'm not talking about the project. I'm talking about the process...
Process, yes.
Ordinance and stuff that we use, okay? So, one or two says we can't. Now, for this to be written in this form, the company for us requesting funding, what should have happened was, we should have had a, this request, and we should have had an ordinance.
Ordinance.
Which we should have then went back and done the ordinance then first to approve the funding, put the money in there for that particular item, and then when we go back and we do the item. Now, we have the finance director sitting there. If anyone is not sure or question what I just said, let's bring the finance director up and ask her.
Can I say one more thing?
Go right ahead.
Sure. This is a little different than what we normally do. Normally, you have a budget for a project.
That's different. So that means that's illegal.
And you're gonna build a building. You put the resolution on to award the contract to whomever to build a building, and it can't come on the agenda unless you have the money. In this case, they haven't even gotten that far. So, you know, it's a little odd. Let me, let me, let me, let me...
Duze are trying to tell her, hey, it's, it's not odd, it's incorrect. She mean it's odd. You have ordinances and rules and stuff you have to follow by. What you mean is odd. This is illegal.
It's a little odd because it's like we're asking you, do you want to amend the budget? So, I mean, that's what's being asked, but, but...
That's what it's saying. Mr. Duze ought to say, "Look, this is what it's saying right here, woman. You, you, you saying, telling me my eyes lying to me."
Basically, this, hold on, thi- this, this is a little different than what we normally do.
It's a little different. It's wrong. Wrong, illegal. Hold on, how, how do you, when dealing with city money and ordinance, how is it a little bit different? That's what you gotta ask yourselves, citizens. If you deal with money a certain way, right, you know they have rules with money in city government. Come on, now, you know that. And what's, what's this a little bit different? What's this a little odd? There's no such thing as supposed to be odd. It's either correct or incorrect. It's legal or illegal.
So normally, you would award the project, and you can't put the project out. You're correct. So hold on, let me, let me just say it.
You're correct.
You, you normally have to amend the budget first before you put the item on...
Oh, Boy T is mad. City attorney just said it. She was forced to say it. Boy T looking mad. Look at him, Ken Law, they looking at her. But Frank said, "Listen to the city attorney." Now, don't act like y'all went to law school. Listen to the attorney.
This is kind of just a precursor item, and it's not something that we normally do, okay?
What the citizens and everybody have to understand, and what I've been saying is, this is not a precursor. This is asking for funding. If we approve this, you're the attorney. This says a resolution amending, I mean, a resol...
See, you, see, you gotta, you gotta start getting elementary with these damn people, right? They'll play all in your face, lie to you all in your face. That's why when the city attorney came out there and tried to tell me some stuff about the Open Meetings Act, I was looking at her like she damn stupid. You think I'm a goddamn fool? And this is exactly why. The goddamn heifer try to lie to you in your face about what you reading. She, that's why, this is why I believe she, she can't, she going ahead and, uh, get it, get the hell smooth up out of here, right? Because she gonna end up losing her goddamn license or get goddamn arrested.
Resolution amending the resolution twenty-three one forty-nine. That's the one that was done for, uh, seven million point, seven hundred mil- seven million two hundred thousand. But you're gonna amend this one. It says right here, "Increasing the project allocation..."
See, break it down Barney style for these damn dummies, right? They want to play you like you stupid, but you gotta read the stuff over to them. They'll keep, they'll keep looking at the shit, acting like you crazy. You reading it to them, they'll still act like you crazy, but you gotta read it to them several goddamn times before they concede.
By seven million for engineering and stuff. So if we approve this, we are approving, we are approving, amending it and putting seven hundred, I mean, seven million more money into this if we approve this.
Okay, so that's why, if you notice, we didn't sign off on this one?
Oh, there you go. There you go. We, why you didn't sign off on the city attorney? Why you didn't sign off on it? Why you didn't sign off on it? Because it's illegal. You don't want to get your behind in a actual violation of your own ordinance, right? You're violating the bond covenant. You're violating your ordinance without putting a, um, an ordinance for money on there to fund it and not amending the budget to do that.
This is just a request that was made, but you really have...
Hold on now, oh, oh, now, when, see, they, see, they been having conversations in the back, right? When she said that's why they didn't sign off on it, that's showing that she's not being liable for it. And Boy T, see, normally Boy T would be oblivious to this, right? He doesn't have a clue. Normally, he wouldn't have a clue what's going on. But they done talked about this so much and how they violating the doggone law. Boy T want to go ahead and do some interference.
Point of order, point of order, point of order, point of order. Okay, you're, you're the attorney. We call the finance director...
Frank said, "Listen to the attorney." The attorney didn't say, finally, the attorney said something that he didn't like, right? So now, he want to get somebody else to go ahead and co-sign with him. That's il- that's illegal. But the city attorney said, "We ain't signing off on it." You nigger, you negroes doing that. You negroes doing that old stupid ass crap. That's what you dumb negroes is doing. You go do something illegal, y'all go ahead on and do it.
Yeah, please.
Okay, but what he's asking is not the finance issue, okay?
Well, he asking that the finances, but, but Pastor Frank, tell your cousin Thurman Bill Cyclops, Boy T, "Listen to the attorney. You didn't go to college. You didn't go to college to be attorney. Let the attorney speak."
It's you with it.
Okay, because I can answer the question.
Okay, no, 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 I'm not questioning your ability at all. I'm not questioning your ability at all, but I'm listening to what he's saying.
See, Boy T making the city attorney look like a goddamn fool. Because she is a fool, because you following these dumbass clowns up here, city attorney, and you need to have a care package sent to you, the ethics commission, the DA, somebody before you leave.
And so I want... Okay, okay, come on, though.
You can't appropriate money in a resolution. You have to appropriate money in an ordinance. And normally, we do it the opposite way. This is just something that was requested.
So she's saying she ain't in it. You gotta do it through an ordinance, but this is requested because you got these dummies with no doggone college, with no, not college, with no understanding. They think they have four votes, they can go ahead and do it. That was requested. They want to move the money with a resolution. But you gotta do it another way. You got dummy Boy T, Ken Law, Frank, and Airhead over there say, "Hey, we gonna go ahead and do it something else." Tell you the truth, I don't, I don't believe Airhead knew what in the hell going on. She just there for that fourth, fourth vote.
Okay.
Finance director, what he's alluding to, is that happening?
That is happening. If you guys approve this, ordinance is coming to you at the next council meeting. That would amend the budget. It has to.
And I wanted you to, attorney has been saying it. I wanted you to say it, and maybe I can get Jesus next.
Oh, here we go now. We done did something illegal. Now we want to put Jesus into it. I make everybody laugh. Oh, Jesus, oh, Jesus is saying that. This is how these crooks use your religion to go, to, to fool you, people. Boy T needs to be ostracized, reprimanded by any type of pastor. He should be shunned from any type of church going on, but you follow these dummies and you give these crooks your, you give, you allow these crooks to be the liaison to a higher power. you give, you allow these crooks to be the liaison to a higher power, right? Now, how they act, the higher power that they serve may not be the higher power you think they serve or you wanna serve, right? When you, in fact, may be praising God, these clowns may actually be worshiping the devil.
Okay, okay.
I swear by Jesus.
Attorney said it, I got you to say it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and what's, what's the first part? Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
The first, the first part is that we not supposed to put an item on it. This is according to our, and we do not put an item on a general requesting funding that has not been budgeted. That's the first part.
That's a legal question.
No, that, that's for the finance.
No, but, but, but no, she, she gonna deal with this legally, you answered that, am I correct on that?
I answered it and said we didn't sign off on it, because it's different than what we normally do, but-
It's not supposed to be done that way, they didn't sign off on it, legal department is not touching it, according to her.
I understand, you know, this could have been done as a discussion, yeah, this is not, right.
Hold on, now Bartee wanna go ahead and filibuster, right? This is a crooked work, people, you're watching a criminal act in front of you.
Didn't sign off on this resolution.
They didn't sign off on it, this is a crime. Bartee is trying to push this, you gotta be one stupid son of a dog if you listen to Bill, Thurman Bill Psychopath Bartee.
My mind, because this is something that was ongoing.
Yeah, I think we kinda beating it out, she's explaining it.
So some of those steps were not needed, or-
Hold on, who, who you trying to tell the steps were not needed? You just heard the city attorney say it, you heard the finance director say it, but Bartee, you trying to say it's not needed? This is a crime in front of you, people.
We thought that we were working with individuals who would automatically understand, you know, it's not anything that would cause punitive damage.
You thought we was working with people that understood, it's not what you- Hold on, man, hold on, I, I gotta wind this back up. Oh, I gotta wind this back up a little bit, let me see if this enough.
Some of those steps were not needed.
Not needed.
We thought that we were working with individuals who would automatically understand, you know, it's not anything that would cause punitive damages.
Damages.
And would cause, uh, incarceration.
Did you hear, we thought we was working with people that automatically do, that we were not doing anything, hold on, man, I gotta read, I gotta see that one more time, hold on, man, I gotta, hold on.
Some of those steps were not needed, or, we thought that we were working with individuals who would automatically understand, you know, it's not anything that would cause punitive damages. And would cause, uh, incarceration. Of folk who are up here.
We thought we was working with people that understood that we were not doing anything that would cause punitive damages or locked up or whatever the hell these say. Oh, I got some stuff to chop up, oh, man, I be damn near two B's trying to chop this up.
Yeah, I don't think any of that, okay, thank you. All right, any other questions on this? Councilman Lewis, you got something else?
Yes, the reason that, just listening-
Seen the city attorney was like stuck ahead, I can't deal with this crap here. This ninja, I can't deal with it, that, this is a crime in progress, people. This is a crime in progress.
You all, and we put a, the city always had a policy. You cannot bring up anything unless you have a funding source. It's a policy, written policy, because what was happening, I got tired of hearing these council members advertise-
It's a written policy, you violating your own policy. Now, you could have got away with it if it wasn't a policy, say you don't know, but it's a policy that you don't, you violating your own policy. The city attorney tell you she ain't with it, but your dumbass wanna go ahead and do it. And you got Kenlaw and Frank look dumb as clowns because they with it and they can't defend this dumb shit.
And getting free publicity in the papers, and nothing happens. Because, and then turn to the city manager, say, "Why don't we get the money?" And they will tell the city manager, "Find it." So, we put a policy together. You find the funding, you, you, funding source first, and then you do the project.
Okay, we gonna start that next week, all right, now.
Bartee said, "We gonna do that next week?" They gonna do it how the hell they wanna do it now. Bartee, this is, this is crooks. This is, this is some of the dumbest shit I ever seen in my life. This is a crime. This is criminal. Oh, man, oh, I, I'm trying to get through that, I, I gotta, I gotta finish this.
Wait a minute, just now, we're ready, any other questions on this? Okay, we're ready, we're ready, a citizen wants to speak? You come up, sir, say your, say your name and then your address.
Get this adjusted, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, 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 it's good.
My name is Jerry Norris, uh, reside in Port Akers, I'm a third generation Port Arthuran. Uh, my family came here in nineteen eighteen. And, uh, the concern about the fourteen million dollars, that's a lot of tax dollars. Those dollars are from taxpayers. It's not free money, this is money from hardworking people. And at times, it appears that the city of Port Arthur does not account for the spending of the money. What has the citizens of Port Arthur upset and myself included about the spending money allocated for city streets citywide is to spend fourteen million on an area when citywide is a known problem, that the streets of Port Arthur in terrible shape. It is totally unfair to spend money on a project that has no direct benefit to the whole of Port Arthur. Repave Woodwork, Woodworth Boulevard, just as you would repave any other street in Port Arthur. Leaving out all the, the fluff, parks and trees and all that. I understand that we wanna beautify the city. The citizens of Port Arthur deserve the money that is allocated for streets to be done with equal consideration to all of the citizens. Passing of this project will alienate the majority of the citizens' right to representation for city services in Port Arthur. It is time to reconsider the entire project. We have a large number of people from out of town working in Port Arthur, and the topic other than the mosquitoes is usually about the streets. I understand the concept of the plan of Woodworth Boulevard. As the interest of the city, but to spend the fifty million on, should be spent on all the streets, and let's work on the aesthetics at another time. I'm concerned about the federal project, but I'll leave that up to the lawyers to decide the legal aspects to all the allocation of the funds. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you, thank you so kindly for your remarks. Okay, uh, we're ready to vote? Oh, okay. Begin by saying your name and your address.
Ms. John Jones, six forty East Tenth Street. He has said very much of, of what I feel and believe in. But I only speak for the community of, of Port Arthur, I have nothing against beautification. I love beautiful things in a beautiful city. But I can remember in the past that, uh, one of the mayors put beautification first before, before, uh, taking care of the streets, and that is the reason why we in the situation as of now, that we, uh, the, everything this month, the streets are not fixed, uh, the, the drainage is not fixed, a lady on Facebook just said the other day, uh, water backed up into her garage, and she have to pay someone to take the stuff out and bring it to the street or have her garage cleaned. On, uh, fixing, that is, and, and on behalf of the city, this disturb her household. And where, where we found the money? You know, uh, even do we come up here and charge it to you on things like that? You know, that happened because of you, or the streets were stopped up, or this, uh, or whatever, the water came into her house or the garage. It's over and over and over, things is a party to the city that is happening to us, not upon ourselves. And so I say again, I have nothing against beautification. I have, but it's just not the time and the place. And the community would like for us to do the streets, put them comfortable for us to drive down, and the water to decease in the community. It's a long time happening, we didn't just stop this. And I know it's gonna take some time, you said you don't have enough manpower. What about hiring? Use that money to hire somebody to do these streets and get it over with. And then we will mind moving to the next situation, you know? I know we can do two things at one time, I know that. But the main thing, it's been two to three years for the surge and the things is very, we are very uncomfortable with, thank you.
Okay, thank you so kindly for your remarks. Come right on up, state your name and your address.
Good afternoon, Dr. Roslyn Queen, two two nine four Bayou Drive, Port Arthur, Texas, seven seven six four zero. My issue with this whole situation is, why do we keep putting the cart before the horse? Who in their right mind wants to come down Woodworth, who's been totally replaced and not make it down Proctor or Lake Shore Drive, and it's terrible? Why do we keep doing the wrong thing for the citizens? And as this vote will probably go, yes, we know you got your four with her up there, okay? We know that for a fact. And that's not fair to the citizens who don't approve of this project. It's like you guys just forgot about the citizens who pay your salary. Who pay the, the mayor, who pays the city manager, who pays every employee in the city of Port Arthur. We pay that salary. What is wrong? What is wrong with our council? We have a problem, and it's not the citizens, it's the council.
Okay, thank you for your remarks, someone else?
Six six two five Jade Avenue, my name is Gloria Sanchez.
Yes, thank you.
And my address is six six two five Jade Avenue, Port Arthur, Texas, I forgot where I live. Happy New Year to all of you. Oh, Lord, I'm not agree with this project, I think you really need to think about it. When the streets are in terrible condition, you put fifteen million dollar to beautify Boulevard. I wish we can have the money to beautify the entire city, not only one piece of the Boulevard, but we don't have the money to do that. I know you can handle two, three, four different things, but we need the resource to do this. And we don't have the money to do Boulevard in the streets. We need more priority on the street. I ended with a rock inside my shoe pad in my disc, and a rock, and I said, "In a rock?" Yes, in a rock, because the street that I have to drive every single day is not in good conditions. I have to pay for mechanic, not you, and I'm not the only one with this kind of problems. I drive around the entire city, and I, I put in more emphasis in the two councils at the large because represent the entire city. And the entire city, you can, I invite you to drive around the street, the neighborhoods. I street that you can, you cannot drive on it. And, and we need to concentrate it what is most important for the entire city. And like I said, I wish we can have money enough to beautify the entire city, not only ten blocks. That's mean I really think that you should think more on citizens and fix our streets first. If we have money on the budget, they have been not used to repair the street. That was the first thing that you was thinking when you request this, this loan, this bonds. And it's our money because we gonna have to pay for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so kindly for your remarks. Anyone else from Calvary? I think not, any other questions from here? Oh, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I will call for a vote.
Okay, we're ready? Is it, uh? Oh, excuse me, I thought you just left your light on, go right ahead.
No, what, what I wanted to say was, I like the project, but the city manager can budget for this next year. This year, he can budget, he got time to budget for this, this is not gonna happen overnight. He can budget for this.
Okay, okay, we're ready for the vote? Okay, roll call vote, they requested that. I don't think the mic is on.
Councilmember Deese?
No.
Councilmember Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kenlaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Mayor Bartee?
Yes.
Measure passes.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll move to next order of business. There is item number four.
There you go, people, there's, there's a crime caught on camera, right? You have just seen council members real- illegally reallocated money from, from a bond that has its requirements on the money that you shouldn't, that you can't do. Illegally reallocated money from a bond to go into this streets project. Now, understand, people, this is, the corruption is so huge, right? Because these dummies on council would not do this if they don't believe they had any legal protection, right? Normally, the city attorney is their cover. But this is so egregious, right? So outright a violation of their own ordinances, their own procedure, that they're gonna go ahead and do it, and these dumbass council members, right? Um, Frank, Kenlaw, and Airhead, Tiffany Hamilton, don't give a damn about the citizens who voted on this crap, right? And Hamilton, she should be ashamed of herself because she's a district two council person, and she voted on it. She voted to remove money from out of her district to put this on the street project in another district, right? She can't even blow it off and say, "Hey, it's gonna be in, in her district, it's going to another district," but hell, what do you expect? She's on the teleprompter right now, most likely in Baltimore, Maryland, where, where her husband resides, living over there. She don't plan to stay in this city. She's gone, she just over here trying to get what she can get and hold these four votes down. So, people, you've just witnessed a crime. Now, you need to take this city council meeting, right? This one, and go ahead and put it online, I mean, go ahead and share this, share this with all the law enforcement authorities. Heck, if the DA's not gonna do anything, you need to move up there to the Attorney General and complain with them, I don't have the, uh, defamation, but you can complain to the Attorney General about the DA, right? You know, let them know, hey, there's a lot of corruption going on, they're not doing anything about it. And also, you can go ahead and look up the codes of, um, professional conduct with, with the city attorney, you know, it's a lot of, you can easily get up for misconduct, you can get up for, um, lies, probably, there's a lot of other stuff you could probably get up on there, but at least at the bare minimum is misconduct, right? Misconduct on here, so, um, yeah, so, so it's a lot, it's, it's, it's a good deal of stuff. You can get on the professional, um, conducts, dispenes, see, just for professional conducts, right? Her, um, her ethics from the bar association, so, you need to go ahead and try to, you know, you can kinda go ahead and look that up if you feel like, you know, you wanna do some more complaints and now with a care package. So, yeah, I mean, you've watched this, you've witnessed this, so, people, it's no excuse why these crooks shouldn't go to jail. They violated their own policies. Again, with the recap, they cannot move money by just an ordinance. Well, first, they illegally moving money from the bond covenant, right? Misappropriation of funds. That's the first thing. The bond covenant, you violating the bond covenant by using that bond money for some other crap. Two, you can't move the money with a resolution without a, a finance ordinance putting the money on there, right, using, uh, financing it. Third, you know, you, you can only amend the budget during an emergency, this is not an emergency. And this is not an emergency. Just like Mr. Lewis say, hey, you can go ahead and budget that money for it, right? You have to have these things budgeted. There's no certain thing as unallocated money. So this right here was a good clinic. Mr. Dusette mainly did, right, and Mr. Lewis also. But Mr. Dusette really did a clinic on ironing down the city attorney. Hey, this ordinance is moving money. City attorney said, hey, we didn't sign off on it. So we don't normally do it like that. It's, it was requested. So you got Bart T and him want to request to do it. And the goal, all out the legal means, is right here on you. You can't say that everything they was doing was legal. He was trying to tell you that he thought he was working with people that automatically knew they wasn't committing a crime. This is some of the dumbest crap ever. This is a crime caught on camera. People, I need you to share this, share this, share it. Tag people, let everybody know this was a crime on camera. And people, I need you to go ahead and, and share this good gospel. This good revolutionary gospel, which is, which is from the Book of Revolution, right? Particularly the P A Political Revolution Podcast. And I'd like y'all to take it easy until the next time. Everybody, peace.